September 8, 2020, meeting of the Lebanon zoning board of adjustment will come to order. Before we begin the meeting, however, we'll have a review of meeting procedures and New Hampshire RSA 91 hyphen A. Mr. Corwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Tim Corwin. I am staffed with the planning department. I just have a few opening remarks. Due to the coronavirus pandemic in pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon zoning board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the city of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the zoning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to listen to state in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/lot. And clicking on the link for the September 8, 2020 zoning board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minute, to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members to identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that if you are anyone other than a board member, that you please disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees, at least until such time as you participate in the hearing. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor over the middle lower half of your screen. For people calling in by phone, press star six.
Don't go anywhere.
Press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, you can email me at corwin, C-O-R-W-I-N, at lebanonnh.gov, corwin@lebanonnh.gov. Or you can try using the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having, although it's difficult for me to monitor that while paying attention to other aspects of the meeting. If I can provide technical assistance, I will try to do so. If I am unable to do so, which is more likely than not, it is still worthwhile to be aware of the problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to hold the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that for most of the public hearings that will be heard tonight, these will be continued to the September 21 zoning board meeting for a decision. Continuing the application, continuing these applications will allow for additional public testimony in the event that an interested person is unable to access the meeting. For anyone who would like to provide testimony but could not as a result of technical difficulties in accessing this evening's meeting, please send your questions or comments on the project that you're interested in by sending an email to planning@lebanonnh.gov. That's planning@lebanonnh.gov. For additional information, please feel free to call the planning and development department at 603-448-1457. All votes taken tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note there may be a delay between the times that something is said and when you hear it at home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the chat function. Please do not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded, and it will be available on the city's website at lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corwin. Before we begin our public hearings, we should call the role and indicate, excuse me, call the role of attending board members, and please indicate whether or not you are alone in the room from which you are participating in the meeting. Mr. McDonough?
Good evening. I am alone, and I am here.
Mr. Katz?
I am here, and I am alone.
Mr. Patterson?
I'm here, and my wife is present.
And your wife is what?
Present in the room.
Mr. Nash? Mr. Nash?
I hit the star six. Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm alone. I'm here.
All right. And I am here, and I'm alone. This is the board chair. Public hearings, although the agenda indicates that the first public hearing will be in a matter continued from August 3, in fact, that application is incomplete, those applications are incomplete and will not be heard tonight. Consequently, our first public hearing, oh, wait a minute, before we go to the public hearings, I'm getting ahead of myself. Minutes from August 17. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of presented on September 8 from August 17.
Is there a second?
Dan Nash, second.
Are there any comments, corrections, additions, deletions? Any board member wishes to make any comments?
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson. I have one comment I'd like to make on the minutes.
Okay.
Page 10, line, I don't know where we can put it in. I'm assuming after number four someplace. I would like it to add that it was suggested that the board review the minutes because I accounted the testimony to be different than what we discussed. Although that didn't happen, I just wanted that noted.
The minutes for?
Regarding that hearing, when we denied, and that was referenced, the Lebanon Vogel that we heard.
All right, the Joanna Sikadi.
Sikadi, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are there any other?
This is Linda, sorry. Could you tell me again, Mr. Patterson, what you'd like me to add and where?
I referenced that I understood the discussion to be different, and I suggested that the board review the minutes before deciding, but that, well, I didn't see that noted anywhere I just wanted that to be noted, even though it doesn't really, you know, it was denied, I just wanted that noted in the minutes.
Is there anything else regarding the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Well, let's do it this way. Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The vote is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. Just a quick question. Mr. Nash, which phone number are you calling for? I just want to be able to keep track of you. What's, what are the last four digits? What's that?
4928.
Got you. Thank you. Sorry.
And this is Linda one more time. Am I assuming that Mr. McDonough is giving voting privileges for the meeting or just for the minutes?
Mr. McDonough is getting voting privileges for the entire evening on anything that comes up for a vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our first public hearing tonight is continued from August 17, 2020. William and Lori Grisoffi, 351 Meriden Road, text map 167, lot 16, zoned RL1. Request for a variance from Article 3, Section 3, 12.2 of the zoning ordinance to allow a towing business and vehicular impound yard. Is there anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Nick Burke. Can you hear me? I represent William and Lori Grisoffi.
I can hear you fine, Mr. Attorney Burke.
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us something about this application? And let us know what you would like.
All right, thank you. I'm calling in on the phone, and periodically it automatically mutes itself, so if I drop, I will be connecting back just as quickly as I can. I represent William and Lori Grisoffi, who own property at 351 Meriden Road in Lebanon that they purchased back in 2003. At the time of the purchase, there was a large commercial or industrial garage on the property, and since their purchase in 2003, the Grisoffis have operated a towing business from the property, which includes a storage yard as well as the commercial garage space that they use in connection with their business. Prior to their purchase in 2003, the former owners operated a moving and storage company from the property, and prior to that owner, the property was the home for a towing business. The property is in the RL1 zone, and at no point during that time was there a variance allowing the operation of this commercial business from the property. However, the commercial use of the property dates back continuously to at least the mid 1980s, and the commercial garage building that is constructed on the property, we believe, was constructed in 1986, although the city building records were destroyed in the flood, there is an inscription in the concrete of the building that indicates it was built at that time. This has been a long process. When it was brought to the Grisoffis' attention that they absolutely needed a variance in order to continue operating their business, they filed an application, and there were a number of hearings held and a number of rehearings held, because at the time of the initial hearings in this case, the zoning board did not have a full complement of members, and therefore, there were a number of requests for rehearings. But ultimately, on April 1 of 2019, the full zoning board of adjustment voted and granted the variance for the property to allow the continued use of the commercial structure and the use of the property in connection with the towing business, including the impound yard on the property. That variance, the zoning board found that all of the criteria were met for this particular use to be allowed as a variance on this particular property. There were a number of conditions imposed, and after the planning board issued its decision in the late fall of 2019, there was a limited period of time for the Grisoffis to complete all of the conditions, which included the planting of trees for landscaping and the construction of a fence. And unfortunately, that, those improvements were not completed within 180 days of the granting of the planning board approval of the site plan, and the zoning office, the planning and zoning office issued an order voiding the existing permit. We filed an appeal, and at the initial hearing on our appeal, it was suggested that rather than proceeding with the appeal, that we should instead file a new application, which we have done. The proposal that we have submitted is the same proposal that was previously approved by the zoning board of adjustment in April of 2019, and we are asking that the board approve the proposal to allow the continued operation of the towing business, including the impound yard on the property. The property, some of the conditions that were imposed that had not been completed within the 180-day period included the planting of a number of trees to provide a landscaping buffer between the Grisoffi property and the neighboring property, and those plantings have in fact now been completed. Another of the conditions was that the impound yard be surrounded by an eight-foot-tall stockade fence. Mr. Grisoffi went to Home Depot and ordered stockade fencing, not realizing that stockade fencing comes in standard six-foot-high sections, erected it, but as Chairman Koppenepfer had pointed out, one of the early hearings, I believe, on our hearing for requesting the initial appeal, it didn't meet the eight-foot requirement. Mr. Grisoffi has since purchased additional sections of the stockade fencing and has raised the height of the fence to the condition that was imposed as part of the original variance. This is a new application, but it is an application on the exact same, with the exact same requests that were imposed or submitted as part of the original application which was approved. And so we're requesting that the Board of Adjustment grant the variance again and impose reasonable conditions to, on this project. Specifically, what we're asking for is that the board condition the grant of the variance to, condition it upon the surrounding of the impound yard with an eight-foot-high stockade fence and the planting of trees as they have been done, so approving essentially what has been done, planting of trees along the common boundary or on the Grisoffi property, budding the boundary between the Grisoffi property and the property belonging to the Mons. Mr. Mon has submitted an objection to our request and has, most of his objections relate to his allegations that we did not comply with the conditions which had been imposed in the prior grant of variance. Again, this is a new application, and the conditions that the board chooses to impose are up to the board anew. And again, we hope that the board will grant the variance with the conditions requiring the eight-foot-high stockade fence and the plantings as they have been planted along the property. I do want to say very briefly that in Mr. Mon's objection, he accuses both me and Mr. Grisoffi of lying, and I wanted to state for the record that I take offense, I've been practicing for an excess of 36 years. I have never been accused of lying, and I do not lie. Mr. Grisoffi has throughout this long process with the prior variance application and the current application tried to understand and address the concerns raised by his neighbor. The number of the conditions that were imposed previously were in direct response to objections raised by Mr. Mon. During the process, it was pointed out early on that a shed that was on the property was within the setback, and Mr. Grisoffi voluntarily removed it. There had been an addition made to the back of the commercial structure, which again, when it was pointed out to Mr. Grisoffi, he removed without objection. And most recently, when it was pointed out that the stockade fence was six feet high and not eight feet high, he took immediate steps to remedy that situation. So while I have never lied, Mr. Grisoffi has been proceeding throughout this whole matter in an upstanding manner, trying to address everybody's concerns and do what he needs to do to comply with the spirit of the ordinance and try to make everybody as comfortable with his request as possible. So we are requesting that the board grant the variance, allowing the continued use of the property as previously granted in April of 2019, and that the conditions that are imposed be that he maintain the eight-foot-high stockade fence around his impound yard and that the existing landscaping, which he has added, be a requirement. And if I have, if anybody has questions, I'd be very glad to respond to them.
Thank you, Attorney Burke. Before we go any further, Mr. Corwin, I have a procedural question. We now have this case before a zoning board that has three members who were not sitting on this application the first time the applicant applied. Well, they weren't sitting at the meeting when the application was approved, and that is Mr. McDonough, myself, and Mr. Katz. If I'm, Mr. Katz, you didn't vote on that proposal, did you? Or did you?
I think that I did, actually.
Yeah, I think you did.
Then it would be just Mr. McDonough and myself. So my question to you, Mr. Corwin, is what precedential value does that first hearing have? Do we act as if it never occurred? Do we have to take its findings as findings in this case? What's the status of that previous hearing?
It's extraordinarily rare that this happens, where you have a decision that requires certain things to be done within a certain amount of time, and then there's a, and then those things aren't done, and then, and then the approval is deemed void, again, partly because it is, it's unusual for you to have a timeline of improvements that need to be made, and then they're not made. So this is, this is a very unusual situation. So I don't know that I have a clear answer to your question. I think it's a good one. What I, what I might suggest off the top of my head is that, what I'd like to say and would like to think is that this is a, this is a brand-new hearing. This is, so the evidence should be taken, should be evaluated in the light of this application right now, unrelated to the decisions that the zoning board made in the prior case, because if that's, if that's not, if that doesn't happen, then this is arguably not a new application. On the other hand, I, I would think that if you enter into deliberation and you find that, that the board is poised to make a determination opposite what it did a year ago, I think the board needs to be very, needs to explain its reasoning very deliberately. I don't know, I don't know the answer to the question, but all I can say is that if, again, if the determination is to deny, I think that the board would probably, it would be prudent for the board to be very, very clear on its reasoning, perhaps, perhaps more so than, maybe, maybe than it would in the normal course of things, because there is this prior decision, and we don't really know. I don't, I don't think there's any case law on this, so those are, those are my thoughts off the top of my head. I don't know if that's helpful at all, but.
All right. Do any of the board members wish to be heard on this particular issue?
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson.
Mr. Patterson?
Previously, we've spoken about this hearing coming up, and I've mentioned things to staff that I was told that this is a new hearing, and things were, I don't want to say irrelevant, but essentially irrelevant from the past hearing in regards to documents entered or carried over from the previous case. It's my understanding in reviewing this and, and what I've looked and kind of researched about this is that this is a new hearing. That's how I understood it, and that we have to hear it based on the facts presented to us tonight. That was my understanding.
All right. Anybody else on the board?
So, yeah, this is Jeremy Katz. I had a couple of thoughts. I do agree with Mr. Patterson that it's, there's a new hearing. However, you know, to the extent that the applicant or the abutter had previously sent in material that we had reviewed or is in the record last time, and they would like to just simply ask for it to be put into the record this time for us to consider as we deliberate, you know, it might be useful for the sake of efficiency to allow them to do that as it was previously submitted and would probably be consistent with what either of them would probably say now, and might make for a more efficient hearing. But I do agree that this is a brand-new hearing this time around, because the cancellation of the prior variance means that there is presently no variance and no approval for this.
Anybody else on the board?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman, this is Paul McDonough. I agree with the statements by Mr. Katz and Mr. Patterson that this is a new application and should be considered on the merits that was included in the application. However, I do think that there is an opportunity to refer back to the previous application when there's, on one particular issue in terms of credibility. If there's inconsistencies in the testimony that's heard, the board may have to make a decision about which way they're voting, just as if there were two contrary opinions offered by experts, the board has to make that decision. So I do think it does, credibility does have a bearing on the previous application as presented here and what we've learned about how this has been handled.
All right. Mr. Nash, do you have anything to offer?
Not on the issue at hand when we get to the case. I have much to talk.
Well, I agree with Mr. Patterson and Mr. McDonough and Mr. Katz that given that it's a new hearing, we should rely on the evidence that is presented before us tonight and in the documents that have been filed in this application for this hearing. I think with respect to the credibility issue, that is, if somebody who is testifying in the present hearing testified in a previous hearing differently, that can certainly be brought up, and the witness can be questioned by any of the board members regarding that. With the issue of documentation, since we will not be making a decision tonight, at the very earliest, our decision will be two weeks from now, you should, you can give the applicant and anybody else appearing who opposes this an opportunity to present documents for the board to consider at the next hearing. But if the documents aren't before us in the context of this hearing, then we can't consider that. That is, we can't go digging back through the records of the old case and say, oh, I want this document. It's up to the applicant or the, or the, anybody opposing the application to give us those documents. Does that meet with the approval of the board? Mr. McDonough?
It does, yes, thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir, it does, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Attorney Burke, do you have any desire to be heard on this issue before we get to the merits of your application?
Only that I appreciate that you'll be affording an opportunity to have us submit additional documents. I would certainly request that all documents in the prior hearings be considered by you, and since you're suggesting that this is a new, completely separate application and that the record needs to be made between, or shortly after. that the record needs to be made between, or shortly after this, tonight's hearing, I will be submitting copies of those documents that we previously submitted for the board to consider.
All right. Ms. Attorney Burke, you should feel free to submit whatever you feel is relevant to your application. And just to be clear, I, I, I want to say that it is not up to the city staff to hunt up documents that you may wish to submit.
Understood.
Fair enough?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chair, this is Tim. If we could have that additional documentation by the end of next Monday, that is the 14th, I think, that would be helpful, so we can have time to get that in the zoning board's September 21st agenda packet.
That's fine.
Mr. Chair, I have a, can you just clarify something for what was last discussed here for me? It's Al Patterson.
Sure.
I, I heard the staff say have the documents to them by then, but what about requests of documents that one party or the other would need from the, from the city? Would they have to have a request in by a certain date, or?
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the city only has documents that either people objecting to the application or the applicant furnished. What I don't want to have happen, and I'm sure Mr. Corwin doesn't want to have it happen, is that the city staff is burdened with searching up or searching for certain documents.
Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions for the applicant or their attorney, Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Burke, if I could pose a question to you on the, are you still there?
Yes, I, I am.
On the revised site plan prepared by Pathways for you, I guess it's, it's fair to say, I think that it's your contention that the setback line is accurately portrayed in that presentation, is that right?
Yes, so, yes, I believe the, the setback line is accurately portrayed on the original Pathways plan. Once we got through the, the zoning board of adjustments grant of the variance, and we went to the planning board for site plan approval, I personally modified that plan to show certain things like snow storage and the new vegetation that was required and, and a couple of other matters. It would be our intent to, assuming that the variance is granted, is to go back to Pathways to prepare a formal update of the original site plan to show the exact location of the plantings and, and other matters on the, on the, on the plan that we would submit to the planning board.
Thank you. And if we look at the paved parking shaded area on that site plan, and I guess that's on the northeast side, where it says building setback line, parentheses, TYP, and parentheses, do you see where I'm looking?
I, I don't. I'm looking at the screen that I think Mr. Corwin is projecting, and I don't see anything that's in pink.
Okay, well, that's, I think Tim was just circling that area that I was asking you about. Maybe, Tim, you could do that again. Those circles on the top of that paved parking area, is that to represent stockade fencing?
Yes, but I, but to be completely clear on that, that was my.
That's your schedule.
And I, and I have not engaged anybody, nor has anybody from our side been out to actually survey the precise location of the stockade fencing. There was existing stockade fencing on the property before the addition of the entire stockade fencing around the perimeter, and I based my projections on that.
And it appears from the site plan that the stockade fencing would, that the, the gate that we saw this evening, rather than metal gate, that would be a stockade gate, is that correct?
Well, that, that's what it shows on the, on the plan, but I think that's probably more my error in that I'm not sure how you could construct a stockade fence gate, but yes, you're right.
Okay. And that the, this site plan seems to identify an existing iron pipe right down by the edge of the Meriden Road, is that correct?
Yes, it does. I have not, and when we were on the site visit today, we looked, but I, I did not locate it. Apparently, when Pathways did, probably with a metal detector, they were able to locate it because they noted as an existing iron pipe, but I have not personally found it.
Right, and they didn't found a stake and painted orange or anything like that when they did the survey?
Apparently not.
Thank you. And by the way, I don't think there's any question about your credibility or veracity, at least certainly in my own.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Katz?
Yes, so I have a series of questions, just, I'll do one at a time. So Attorney Burke, when we were on-site for the, the site walk and took a view from, of the Grisopi property from the perspective of the Maun property, there, there was a, a representation made by Mr. Maun that he fundamentally did not have an opposition to the use that is proposed, but that he is, he had a problem with really the, the impact of his view and, and, and the diminishment of the aesthetic. And so we looked, and there was a row of evergreens that's been planted, which, you know, intends to presumably grow in and obfuscate the, the view between the Maun property and the Grisopi property. But then if you, up, up by where the stockade fence is, Mr. Maun made a, a presentation that there was not evergreen vegetation. When I asked him, well, in the winter, would seeing a, a fence look okay from, from your perspective, the comment that I got was, well, as long as, as the fence is maintained. So can you talk a bit, a little bit of the ability of, of your client to follow through and actually keep up and maintain the barrier that has been put up, up there? And, you know, whether there is a willingness to accept conditions that, that fence and other barriers that exist at the time be maintained in a way so that the, the view from the, the Maun property is obfuscated?
Yeah, absolutely. We, Mr. Grisopi is absolutely willing to commit to maintaining the fence structurally, and there was an incident shortly after he constructed it this past summer, when a very high wind came through and one of the panels fell down, and I believe in Mr. Maun's submission, he, he went on to the Grisopi property and took a picture of that, and it's part of his submission. But almost immediately, Mr. Grisopi restored the fence and made sure that it was structurally sound, and he's absolutely committed to maintaining that, you know, even if it's not a condition of the grant of the variance.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my second question relates to the ingress egress on the property, because the, the access from the street to the proposed use is, is really identical from the street side of the access to the residential use. Other than simply coming in and out on that driveway, is there any reason why there would ever need to be a visual presence on that driveway of the, the towing business? Or can that all be kind of put away from view, either behind that stockade fence or in the industrial garage?
Well, I'm not entirely sure what you're asking, but other than Mr. Grisopi and, and his employees parking some of their trucks outside in front of the garage, or the employees parking in the parking areas that were closer to the road up the driveway or on the side of the building, there really is no visual impact with, particularly with all cars that are impounded stored behind the stockade fence.
Okay, and, and just my recollection from the first time around when the variance was applied for was that the, the testimony of Mr. Grisopi was that the towing business has a netherlot in West Lebanon, I believe, and that lot is in an area that is, is not substantially residential and not subject to kind of hours of use limitation. Is, is that correct? Does that lot still exist?
Yes, it does. So Mr. Grisopi has a, a second location on Main Street in West Lebanon. It's a former gas station garage, and he has a smaller impound yard down there that's not subject to the same time restrictions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Mr. Patterson?
I was muted. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Just for a point of clarification, Attorney Burke, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
When we were walking the lot, I forget who, but somebody asked in regards to parking, employee parking, excess vehicles. Now, although I may have misunderstood, because I think you and Mr. Grisopi were talking at the same time, I believe that he said they park on the southern side of the building in that large open area behind the building, which is kind of, as you pull up off to the right. Is that, did I misunderstand him?
No, I, no, I don't think you did. I think that Mr. Grisopi said that his employees do park on what would be the southern side of the commercial building. There are, there are also several parking spaces that are adjacent to the new landscaping trees that would be looking at the plan to the west of the impound yard and adjacent to the impound yard. So sometimes they're parking there, but most often they're on the south side of the commercial building, as you point out.
Just for, again, some clarity, how, if, if, if parking was restricted to the area that I mentioned on the southern side of that building, which would then obstruct those vehicles, if and how would that affect his towing operation?
I, I don't think it would have any negative effect on his towing operation, as long as there are, you know, sufficient spaces on that side for his employees parking when they need to be on the property.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Nash?
One of the things I kept hearing discussion about was planting the trees on the setback line. My understanding of all these years of site line review, if you do the vegetative buffer, the buffer belongs between the setback line and the property line. So that entire strip of, I think it's 20 or 25 feet for a setback here in this zone? Is it 25, Tim?
Yes.
So that entire 25-foot strip is available for the obscuration planting. Those plants don't have to be behind that setback line. Also, the setback line refers to buildings, fences legally in New Hampshire can go right on the property line, and I think the function of this fence was to provide visual screening, which from our site walk it appears to do. So I, I think the, the main concern here is beefing up that vegetated planting on the northern property line so that the neighbor has that visual screen along that northern And another item that appeared to be quite a bit of concern was the boundary. I think it would be important for a boundary survey to be done, and for the proper monuments to be installed, and for the help of novices or non-surveyers, that those boundary markers be witnessed with, as Mr. McDonough mentioned, probably a gravestone and some flagging or some paint or something to identify the property line, so it's easier for our enforcement officer, if he has to go out there and measure plants or whatever, we have some point of reference that would be helpful. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Attorney Burke?
Yes.
Let me ask you this. What, what is the hardship in this case? If a variance, why should a variance be granted?
The hardship is that the Grisopis have been operating this business continuously since 2003, when they purchased. They purchased it from a former owner who also operated a commercial business using the garage and storage areas for a moving business. And prior to that, going all the way back to the 1980s, the owner used the property as part of a trucking business. The hardship is that they have relied upon this property for their, for their income, that they've always been able to use the property this way, that since 1986, there's been a commercial structure on the property to provide necessary support for those various businesses since 1986. And that building itself, as constructed, really is not amenable to other, you know, conforming uses. It would essentially just be a useless, large, commercial-type garage on the property if the business cannot continue.
Well, you do a fair amount of real estate work for clients seeking to purchase property, don't you?
I do some, yes, of course.
And you always do a title search for your clients, don't you?
If, if I'm requested to do that sort of work, I do.
No. But nobody buys a, a piece of property without, without a title search, do they?
They, they should not.
And if they want to operate a business, don't they review the zoning ordinance, or shouldn't they, as a reasonable purchaser? Gee, can I operate the business here that I want to operate?
Well, you're, you're asking me for, essentially to opine on whether whoever did the title search for the Grisopis back in 2003, or the Horns back when they purchased, did a, did a, a proper job, and I'm not sure that, that I feel comfortable doing that. I mean, normally, yes, you would, one of the things you would look at is the zoning of the particular property and whether the proposed use conforms.
You know, we don't know any of these background facts, but we certainly know that you're not allowed to run a towing business in the district that this property is located in. And the fact that you bought a piece of property with potentially industrial garage on it, I don't think, under the law, gives you any greater rights, just because that's there. Does it?
Again, you're asking me to opine on the ultimate, the ultimate decision that has to be made. What I can point out is that on April 1 of 2019, the zoning board entered a finding that in fact, the variance is consistent with the public interest, and substantial justice would be done, given the history of the property.
Well, I appreciate that, but that was exactly what led to my question at the beginning of the hearing. Is this a brand-new hearing, or are we bound by things that happened in the first hearing? I didn't take part in that decision.
Well, and, and I wasn't asked.
Hang on a second. I did not take part in that decision, and we're not bound by that decision. We've all agreed this is a new case, and you're going to present your new evidence or the evidence in support of your proposition, but I don't think you can fairly present evidence of what the zoning board did previously as why you should get a variance now. Would you agree with that?
No, I would not, actually. I would, I would think that honestly, if the zoning board of adjustment has previously made certain findings, unless there's a change in the circumstances, a change in the presentation, a change in the use. in the circumstances, a change in the presentation, a change in the use that is proposed, that the board should be bound by its prior decision. But I understand that, you know, the discussion was held among the board members and they want to look at this afresh. And my position is that even in looking at it afresh, that, uh, this property should qualify for a variance at this time.
So are you saying that, uh, the three members that sat on the board for the previous decision can't decide, oh, I was wrong and I want to change my vote? Are you saying they're bound by the vote they made previously?
I, I think if it's going to be consistent unless there is new evidence that changes the facts, that, uh, the consistent, the position would be the same.
When was the stockade, the stockade fence? I, I, I want to look at the, uh, the pathways drawing. It says it's the existing conditions. So the existing conditions, when Pathways did this drawing, which was in October of 2018, shows the fence along the edge of the paved area, right?
Uh, yes, I believe so. I, I.
Uh, at least along the northern boundary.
Around the northern boundary, yes.
And tonight we observe that that fence, in fact, has been moved or reconstructed. It, it now is not along the edge of the paved area. It is set back at least a car length onto the unpaved area, right?
I, I can't comment on whether the fence was moved. Uh, the original Pathways existing, uh, uh, conditions site plan, uh, I, to, to look at the original one that was prepared, I think you would need to have to go back to the, uh, prior filing, the prior application for variance and look at the original plan that was submitted. The plan that was, with, the plan that was submitted with this application, uh, is not, as it appeared, that it's the original start of the, uh, whole process back in 2018.
Well, wait a minute. Are, are you looking at the same plan I'm looking at?
I have no idea.
Are you looking at the one on the, on the screen?
I'm looking at the one under the screen and that was the plan. That was the, that is the plan that was submitted, uh, with this current application. If you look down to the left of the, uh, title box, you'll see it was revised in, uh, end of July this year by me.
All right. I'm not looking at, Nick, excuse me, Attorney Burke. I am not looking to the left of the title box. I'm looking at the title box. And the title box says existing conditions for William and Lori Grizoffi. And then down to the right where Pathways, to the right of the box saying Pathways Consulting, the date is October 18th. No, October, October 1st, 2018.
Yeah.
So it, on October 1st, 2018, the fence was at the edge of the paved driveway or the paved area, right? According to Pathways.
Mr. Chair, I stand.
Wait, 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 wait. No, let, let, let Ms. Attorney Burke answer my question.
All right. So what I, uh, what I think that the, the small circles representing the stockade fence were added by me during the site plan process when we were trying to show, uh, how we would satisfy the conditions imposed, uh, by the board as a part of the original variance grant on April 1 of 2019. The, uh, the, that plan, uh, and, uh, was revised by me as reflected by the, uh, information set forth to the left of the, uh, Pathways Consulting title box.
Okay.
The original, and I don't have the original plan in front of me because it was part of the original application back in 2018. I do not believe showed any of the fence posts showing the, uh, existing stockade fence, uh, or, or the location of that stockade fence.
So you, you would agree with me that the little Os that extend to the southwest of the fenced-off area, those are, those are in a different typeface than the little Os along the northern edge of the paved area, right?
I absolutely would. And the smaller Os are the fence which I added. The larger Os were intended to represent the new plantings that were to be planted.
Okay. So, so you think you put in all the Os, including the ones along the fence?
I do.
But you don't know for sure?
No, I do. I did.
All right. Are, will you be providing? Nah, scratch that. Uh, Mr. Corwin, could you make a note that one of the documents that we want from the previous filing is the original plan from Pathways dated October 1st, 2018, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chair, if, if the board sees fit to grant the variance, then we will be required to provide an updated site plan, uh, which will precisely locate all of the new plantings as well as the precise location of the stockade fence that is on the property.
Well, th- the reason this concerns me is because of what we saw tonight, which without knowing exactly where the boundary line is, we can't determine where the, where the setback is. Um, but the fence, forget about, I, I guess I disagree with Mr. Nash's opinion that, no, I, I don't think Mr. Nash's opinion is relevant as to where you can put the fence irrespective of the setback line because the decision in this case required that the fence be along the setback line as I read it.
Well, but now you're talking about the prior decision, uh, and my, my understanding is we are submitting a new application at your suggestion rather than appeal the voiding. And so what was agreed to and the conditions that were imposed before, while some of them may continue, uh, or may be modified, it, you know, I think that's really the, the, what the board should be focusing on is what are the reasonable conditions that should be imposed on the grant of a variance?
Well, 10 minutes ago, you told me that unless there's new evidence, the board members who voted in favor of this shouldn't change their opinion. But now you're telling me with respect to the location of the fence that forget about the old opinion. Um, strikes me, you can't have it both ways.
Well, that's not what I'm saying actually. I think that this, this is a request for a use variance in the R01 zone.
Yep.
And so long as use is, uh, meets the criteria, which the board has already find, found that the use does in fact meet the criteria for a variance, that the real inquiry then is, yes, we make that finding and then what conditions will be imposed, uh, as a part of that grant. So I don't think we're, we're saying anything different from each other. I just think that, uh, that, uh, there has already been, there have already been findings made that this use complies with the standards required for the grant of a variance. And then the question is what conditions does the board want to impose?
Well, we do disagree because I don't think the previous decision is binding on anybody and that the board members are free to make up their mind as they will. Um, Mr. Nash, you wanted to, um, comment about the discussion that Ms., that Attorney Burke and I just had. And if, if you still want to comment, feel free.
Yeah, I think one of the, the weaknesses of the plan we have before us is that the existing conditions and the proposed conditions aren't clearly separated. So that fence that's shown along the paving, it's not clear whether it's, obviously that is not where the fence is today. So there's no existing fence on that plan and it's not clear whether the intent is to move the fence to the edge of paving. So that's something that has to be clarified through this process.
Thank you. Uh, this is Nick again. Uh, but our preference would be that the, the board, uh, if it intent, if it grants the variance is that the, uh, stockade fence be, uh, continued in its current location and that we would then provide an updated site plan for site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Um.
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson. I have a question.
Um, hang on one second. Uh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Mr. Patterson.
Um, my question is for Attorney Burke. I, I want to back up when we're referencing, um, purchasing a property, checking zoning, et cetera, et cetera. Um, is that, how is, do you know how that property is taxed? Um, I mean, I'm assuming is, is it taxed as a residential property or, I mean, is, does it, is there a difference in how the city collects its taxes on that property?
Well, I don't think there's a difference in how it collects its taxes, but clearly the assessor's card shows the presence of a commercial garage building as well as the personal residence of the Grizoffis. Uh, and they both have assessed values that are used to calculate the, uh, the tax obligation of the Grizoffis.
But I guess my que, you, you, my question is, is, is when the city collects its money, are they, are they suggesting that because it's a commercial building, they're going to tax it differently or ask for more? Or are they just taxing it by square foot and that's it? They don't care what's in there?
And now my, my understanding is they, they look at the nature of the building. A residence would have a different sort of value than a commercial industrial garage space. And they've assessed the Grizoffi property, uh, taking that into consideration, that there is a, an industrial garage which has a certain value plus a personal residence which has its own value and then the land.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but would it be fair to say that if I had that garage to park my camper in and that was it, it would be taxed different than this building here?
Uh, I don't know. I, I honestly, I, I don't know how to answer that question, Mr. Patterson. I, I don't know how they would look at it if, that you just use it for your own personal use.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I could have, Mr. Burke.
Mr. McDonough?
Thank you. Attorney Burke, I was, if you could straighten out some confusion for me, I was, I think I, maybe I'm wrong, but I was led to believe that there had been recent survey work done on the site by, by both the butter and by the applicant. But it looks as if this Pathways Consulting was almost two years ago, back in October of 2018. Has there been more recent survey work, um, for your client by Pathways or someone else that he was talking about tonight or those references were to something happened two years ago?
Yeah. So the, the original plan that you're looking at now was done back in 2018. My, my understanding is that, uh, Mr. Grizoffi has requested that, uh, Pathways return and actually mark the common boundary between, uh, his property and Mr. Mahm's property, but that he has not had, uh, any results from that yet. And we haven't seen any sort of a revised plan. And it clearly from being out there today, they have not marked the boundary. So I don't know whether they've actually been out to do the work, but it is the intent to make it, uh, you know, have it, have the boundary clearly defined.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Uh, yes, this is, this is Jeremy Katz. I have a couple more questions.
Mr. Katz, go ahead.
So, um, just going back to, uh, Chair Copanepur's, you know, questions about, uh, what work, uh, or evaluation might have been done at the time of the purchase. Um, you know, it, it appears to me that, uh, you know, Mr. Grizoffi is, is, is on the call and clearly, uh, had some thoughts in his mind of how he valued his property that he was purchasing at the time that he purchased it. Uh, Attorney Burke, would you be able to make Mr. Grizoffi available to provide some testimony about how he valued the presence of that industrial garage at the time that he purchased the property?
I, I would be glad to have him speak if he's able to connect. Uh, Bill, if you're there, I don't know if you can, uh, connect or not, uh, let us know, please.
Hey, I, I, this is Tim. I see him online, but I, uh, he appears to be muted. Uh, Bill Grizoffi, if you can, um, if, if you hover your mouse down to the low, the, uh, lower portion, lower middle of the screen, a little box will pop up. You just click on the, uh, the microphone.
I'm glad to ask the next question and just pause if, if he manages to get in, if that would help move things along.
So this is Nick Burke again. Obviously, I, I, Mr. Grizoffi must be having trouble connecting. Um, I can tell you that he purchased the property from, uh, Mark and Sandra Horn, who were, uh, friends of his who had been operating a business on the property. So, you know, I would, I would certainly, uh, suspect that, uh, it was a most definitely consideration that he was buying a property on which he could operate a business since the Horns had been operating a business from that property.
Um, okay. Um, so, so the, the second question I have, and actually it's, it's a question really that's primarily directed to Mr. Corwin, but, um, the variance is to allow the use of a towing business and vehicular impound yard, but it, the creation of that use would actually make two, essentially two primary uses on the property. Is that something that is specifically allowed in this, in this district or is that something that has to have its own variance as well?
The zoning ordinance permits multiple uses on the same property, but, um, that's, that's as a practical matter limited by another provision of the zoning ordinance that, that allows only one, uh, principal building on, on the property. Um, and so now, now that you ask that question, now that I'm thinking about it out loud, um, I'm arguably, arguably a, a variance is required from that provision, which is section, uh, 201.7 of the zoning ordinance? No, it's, um, it's section 205 of the zoning ordinance, uh, provides that there shall be only one principal structure on the lot in the residential district. And so, um, I, that's, that has not, that never occurred to me before. I think, I think, I think perhaps, um, I guess the, the, the matter is squarely before the zoning board and the zoning board, um, can, is, can, can make that, that interpretation. I, again, that hadn't occurred to me. I think arguably this does create two principal structures because that large building would otherwise be considered an accessory structure if used for, you know, used for whatever it's used for, that's accessory to the residence. Uh, but if it's a, if it's a business use, yeah, I think that's, you now have two principal structures on the lot. It's.
Could, um, Attorney Burke comment on that as well, uh, just on, on what the thinking of the applicant is?
Well, clearly we've, we have considered all, all that the, uh, industrial garage building would be used in connection with the business, separate and apart from the, uh, the principal residence throughout this whole process. This is the first time, uh, I've heard this concern raised.
Okay. Uh, and then the last question I have is just relative to, uh, the talk that we just had about the surveyor and properly marking the bounds and, uh, Attorney Burke's comment that, uh, a request is made and they, they haven't come out yet. Um, you know, it, it, it seems that one of the points of contention that caused the revocation of the first variance approval was that, uh, too much time elapsed prior to, uh, actually adhering to the conditions. Uh, presumably a, a reasonable condition here would be properly marking the, uh, the bounds and determining the setbacks. Can you provide a, uh, timeframe by which, uh, everyone could rely on that being done, uh, with the vendor that you've selected?
Well, well, certainly, um, we, we would have to comply with the, uh, the requirements of the zoning ordinance, uh, and that would include getting the site plan approval, uh, and, uh, we need to make application. I believe it's within 90 days of the grant of a variance. So the, whatever we submit to the, uh, planning board for approval, it has to be completed before that time. So yes, we could commit to doing it in a timely manner to get an updated survey to present to the planning board, uh, if so that the process moves along. This past, the, the, the delays that, uh, caused us to miss the 180-day window is that the decision of the, uh, planning board in the prior variance when the site plan was approved. in the prior variance, when the site plan was approved, didn't happen until the end of September. And the decision wasn't issued in writing and delivered until the end of October, beginning of November. And the conditions that we're not satisfied were the construction of the fence and the planting of trees, which was very difficult, if not impossible, to do in the winter. In addition, there were other circumstances in the Grisoffi family that caused them to focus on other important matters. But if we get the board's approval of a variance, we would be operating under the timelines required to get an updated site plan submitted and approved by the planning board. And then if there's additional work that is required, getting it done in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Katz?
That's it for Attorney Burke. I am a little concerned by Mr. Corwin's comments that there's a second section of the ordinance that might require its variance. And I'm wondering whether it wouldn't be worthwhile to allow the applicant to supplement their application and ask for that second variance at the same time so that they don't receive a potential variance approval and then still not be able to do what they're attempting to do because they have to come back to us for a third time.
I think your point's well taken. And I think the only alternative, I think either the applicant has to file an amended application or we seek a legal opinion.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim.
Mr. Corwin.
Yep. I do agree it might make sense for the applicant to submit an amended narrative just addressing a variance from Section 205. But I think the board is within its authority to grant a variance, not just from the section cited, specifically in the hearing notice, which is 312.2 of the zoning ordinance, but also Section 205. We have a comment, a note on our agendas that's standard. And this was something, I think this has been on our agenda for quite some time, predating my tenure here. And this was, this is done at the advice of legal counsel way back when. And the agenda reads, this is under the public hearing notices. It says, "The applications will be considered under the cited section or sections of the zoning ordinance found upon testimony to be applicable to depose actions and to be necessary to consider the request." So, the board can't change the nature of a request. In other words, if someone is applying for a special exception but really requires a variance, in that case, the hearing would need to be re-noticed. But where an application is, an applicant is requesting a variance and you're adding on or even changing the section, legal counsel, prior legal counsel believed that that was within the power of the zoning board to do. And so, if we continue along those lines, then while an amended narrative might be appropriate and recommended, I don't think this would require a submission of a brand-new application or the re-noticing of the hearing.
Well, my concern is that if this were an uncontested hearing, I can understand wanting to proceed like that and saying, "We can do it." But this application has been hotly contested by a variety of people since it was initially filed. And I think we have to be extraordinarily cautious in how we proceed because this is an issue that we just raised for the first time, well, thanks to Mr. Katz, that we first raised tonight. And I do not want to shortchange anybody who has an interest in this hearing. And I guess I would be very conservative in how we go from here.
Just, so everyone knows, this is Tim again. We certainly can amend the hearing notice and re-notice the hearing in time for the September 21st meeting. At the same time, again, as you're suggesting, if the applicant can submit revised application materials by Monday, this coming Monday, then I think this can all be done within the same timeline, but crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, as you've suggested, given that it is a contested application.
Well, you're saying the same timeline, but if it's amended, I mean, we have been routinely... This amendment's going to be heard for the first time on the 21st.
Right.
So, therefore, shouldn't we, based upon our actions during this period of isolation, require the second hearing on our first meeting in October?
I think that's a decision for the board, yep.
Pardon me?
I think that's a decision for the board, yep. It's a good question.
Okay. So... Attorney Burke? Let's hear your input. What do you think?
Well, this is all due, it is just coming up now, but I think throughout the entire process, even during the two years of the prior application, there was no... Everybody understood that there were two buildings on this property. One was a personal residence and the other was an industrial commercial garage building. And so, I don't think anybody's going to be surprised that by asking for the current variance that we're talking about the allowing of the commercial building to continue to be used. That's implicit in the application that we've already filed. I mean, if I need to file an amendment, it's basically going to be stating just that, that there have been since 1986 two principal structures on this property, a personal residence and a commercial industrial garage building, that they've been used for those respective uses for, you know, almost 40 years. So, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody. And I think it could be all decided now since everybody understood that what we're talking about is the use of the industrial commercial building for business purposes and continuing to use the personal residence for residential purposes.
All right. You've just made your closing argument, but that doesn't really address the issue before us. You're saying everybody knew, but nobody realized the implications of that knowledge. You didn't ask for a variance so you could have two principal uses on a residential lot. The zoning department did not catch that there were two principal uses. Nobody on the zoning board caught it. So, here we are, and thanks to Mr. Katz, we recognize there is a serious problem here. And the question is, how do we deal with it in the most, in the fairest way to all concern? Because you're assuming, I mean, you're thinking that zoning board members that previously voted in favor are bound by that vote. And I guess I'd tell you, this is a brand-new issue. And therefore, zoning members aren't bound by anything because they haven't previously voted on this issue. And so, we can't just hurry it along and say, "Everybody knew." At least, I don't think so. I don't want to because given the contested nature of this hearing, I don't think that the issue would be settled by any decision we make. I think you could look forward to further court proceedings, one way or the other. So, Attorney Burke?
Yes.
Would you care to amend your request for a variance?
If that's what the board wants me to do, I'd be happy to file an amendment.
Mr. McDonough, what would you like to see happen here?
I think the concerns raised by Mr. Katz and echoed by the chair raise issues that are not clearly resolved in our minds. And I think we should proceed in a conservative manner and allow an amendment to be applied for.
Mr. Katz?
So, yeah, I brought this up, you know, in large part because I thought it would be accrue to the benefit of both the applicant as well as the abutter, to not have an issue hanging out where someone could get an ordinance, a variance, that they couldn't actually use after they got it. So, you know, however it gets done procedurally speaking, you know, I personally would be fine by Attorney Burke saying, "We hereby amend our request to include this right now in this proceeding and talk to it and simply provide an extra time for response." If notice requires that we have an extra two-week period and a second hearing, I have no opposition to that, you know, whatsoever either. But I think it's really in the applicant's best interest to amend it because otherwise, they can get a variance and then just be back in front of us two months later anyway.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. I would agree that the issue raised is concerning. I would disagree with your description of the hearing. Although it was contested, it was contested by two people, the abutter and somebody who lives on the complete opposite side of town, who is a competitor in business. And I just, and I think that part of his testimony would lead me to believe that it was, at best, nitpicking. So, yes.
How would you like to proceed?
We, I'm not finished yet, Mr. Chair. We have, we do have the abutter who has raised some serious questions. So, as long as we continue this in a timely manner, that we're not strapping the applicant... I mean, this has been going on for a long time, and the board is continuing...
This is the first hearing in this.
Yeah, it's not the first hearing in this matter. So, let's not play antics here. Let's address this seriously. So, as long as it's done in a timely manner, with respect for both parties, I would agree to continue it. But this has been going on for a very long time. And unfortunately, it's costing people a lot of money.
Mr. Nash?
I think a simple amendment to the narrative would be fine. It's clear to everybody involved that there have been two principal uses on the lot. And if we have to take this action to legitimize what's already there, so be it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, sorry, this is Tim. Can I just clarify? You can have two principles on, two principal uses on a lot. That's not prohibited by the zoning ordinance. But what is, what I, that got me thinking about, though, was Section 205, the zoning ordinance, which prohibits two principal buildings. And so, by utilizing, requesting a variance to utilize the large attached garage as a towing business, that I think arguably converts that to a second principal building, which I think arguably requires a variance in Section 205.
The only thing I would add to what's going on is certainly, the applicant can amend the variance in any way he or she chooses. But it's a totally... If you're asking for two variances, you have to satisfy two sets, you have to satisfy the five conditions for getting a variance, two times. It may not be the case that all of the evidence that satisfies or purports to satisfy the five grounds for one variance may not necessarily be congruent with the second variance. That is, the hardship that's claimed for one may not be a hardship for the other one. It may be a totally different hardship, but that's not up to us. That's up to the applicant. So, if we're agreed that there will be a continuance to allow an amendment to our next meeting, and that it will be, the final deliberation and decision will be held two weeks after, at our October meeting, would somebody care to make a motion to that effect?
Don't we have members of the public that are waiting to speak in the public hearing?
Well, if we're going to continue it, they're going to have to come back for the... I mean, Attorney Burke is going to offer more testimony. And I assume, based on some of the questions to him, that Mr. Grisoffi will be testifying. So, we're not going to close the public hearing. But if we're going to amend the complaint, let's hold off on further testimony until we see what the application says. Because as I say, there may be different facts that apply to one variance rather than the other. And until the board sees what the amendment says, and until the public sees what the amendment says, they're not going to know what to complain about. I, if you disagree, I'm going to say so. And we can spend time, but we're going to have a public hearing in two weeks. So, I'm happy to proceed however the board wants to proceed. Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I move we continue this hearing to our next scheduled hearing on September 21st in order to give the applicant time to amend... The applicant's time to amend their application and that, in view of such an amendment, that the final deliberation and decision ought to be moved to our first October meeting.
Dan Nash, I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. Is the board of the opinion that the hearing should be re-noticed to incorporate the additional section of the zoning ordinance?
I'd love to leave it to your discretion, but do you want guidance from the board? I mean, it seems to me you're of the opinion it doesn't have to be re-noticed. And if we can save the applicant that cost...
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And how does the rest of the board feel about that?
Mr. Chair, Al Patterson.
Mr. McDonough?
I defer to Mr. Corwin.
What's that?
I defer to Mr. Corwin's judgment as to whether it has to be re-noticed.
Mr. Katz?
Well, I think that, look, we have an abutter on here now. We have a potential other party that wants to speak here now. I think that if the contention is that we need to continue it because others might not have shown up, but because they did not know that that other issue might be at play, if we, then we should re-notice it because then people should know that that's at play and they should be told that, you know, they should show up if they have something to say. If there's really nothing new that anyone is going to hear and all the parties are here, and you don't need to re-notice it, frankly, I don't think you need to continue it. So, if we're going to continue it, I think it should be re-noticed.
You've convinced me. Mr. Nash?
I've been trying.
I'm fine with just continuing it.
Mr. McDonough or Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Patterson. I'm trying to get in here. My thought is this, if it's serious enough to postpone the hearing and continue this hearing, when we have the abutter that's here, and I'm sure he's willing to speak on his concerns and issues that he has, then we need to re-notice it, if we have a situation that's changing it that much. And I would agree that if we can't have it both ways, I think that was said earlier tonight.
Okay.
So, we either, you know, re-notice or we continue, just move on with this hearing and move forward.
All right. Mr. McDonough?
I agree with Mr. Patterson. I think that... I think that makes common sense.
Mr. Corwin, we're gonna re-notice the hearing.
All right, thank you.
Well, contingent upon you receiving an amendment.
Well, we're gonna have to just re-notice it unless the amendment can be received tomorrow, because the hearing notice is due to the Valley News on Thursday morning.
Okay.
You're gonna, this is Nick Burke, you're gonna re-notice it either way, it's just a question of what addition you get it in, right? I can't have it ready by tomorrow morning.
No, Mr. Burke, this is Tim, I'm not, I wouldn't expect that. I, we're gonna, we'll just go ahead and add that section to the hearing notice, we'll get it to the paper on Thursday, and I trust that you'll submit the amended application materials by the end of day next Monday.
That's fine, because the amendment is, you know, I understand the issue has come up, but the amendment is gonna be pretty simple. There have been on the property two buildings since 1986, one's commercial and one's not. And the other, the supporting arguments for the continued operation of the business in that business property, or business, commercial building, is the same as, it's gonna justify the continued existence of the commercial building. So, it's not really much of an amendment, it's just, you know, we'll cite the section and just say it's been there for forty, almost, years.
All right. So, are there any further comments from the board? Mr. McDonough, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
I vote in favor.
And I vote in favor, the motion, the vote is unanimous, we are continued to September 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Burke. 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, or Attorney Burke, and anybody else who was here to attend this meeting tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim again, I'm sorry, I should've made this announcement at the beginning of the meeting, so I hope, I hope no one's impacted by this, but just should've pointed out earlier that Agenda Item 5C, this is the Oaks application for 92 Riverside Drive, that application has been withdrawn. So, I hope, hopefully no one's on the, on the call to participate in that hearing, but that, that application has been withdrawn. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, thank you. It's 8:30, we're halfway to the witching hour, do any members of the board wish to take a short break or no? Mr. McDonough?
I'm happy to proceed.
Mr. Katz?
I'm happy to proceed.
Mr. Patterson?
I'm happy to proceed.
Mr. Nash?
Proceed.
All right, then we will proceed. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, continued from August 17th, in a matter of Convenient MD LLC applicant and C.T. Brownham Family LLC, One Interchange Drive, Tax MAP 114, Lot 9, Zoned GC. Applicant requested variance from Section 608.4.8.1 of the zoning ordinance to install building signage totaling plus or minus 480 square feet. Total proposed sign area for the property exceeds the maximum sign area allowed under Section 608.4.8.1. Is there anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Attorney Hollis.
Thank you, nice to see you again. I'm, I'm an attorney, my name is Morgan Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S is the last name. My office is at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm here in my office currently, I'm by myself. I represent Convenient MD on this application, as you know, members of the board that have been here, we've been before the board twice before, I have been before the board twice before on this, the last meeting being on August 17th, when my client amended its application down from approximately 460 square feet over what was permitted to be 350 square feet of signage, asking for the signage to be allocated 160 square feet on the north-facing sign, 125 square feet on the west-facing sign, and 75 feet on the south-facing sign. We tried to present evidence and explain our calculations and the reasons for the signage request, and then following a public hearing, the board had a considerable deliberation, which I made note, I thought there were two principal issues the board was discussing. One, can the board adjust the square footage to be different than the application as amended? And that is, could the board grant fewer square footage for the signs, or differing square footage on differing signs? And then the second issue was, is the adjustment a condition of approval, essentially leaving it to the full discretion of the board, or is there an amendment necessary? Also, I think my notes reflected, members weighed in on the size, and they felt what might be reasonable, and my notes reflected somewhat of a consensus of a total of 300 square feet, there's 125 for the north-facing, 100 for the west-facing, and 75 for the south-facing. So, with that in mind, we connected up together, my client and I, and had a discussion about the signage, consulted with the sign experts, evaluated likely traffic patterns, et cetera, and then they authorized me to present a letter to the board, which I believe you all have received, which said my client would amend its application down to 300 square feet, and that 300 square feet, which had been discussed at the board, would be acceptable, but my client really needed to have 150 square feet on the north side. That left a division of another 150 square feet to the other two, and we suggested 75 and 75. I guess I just wanted to be clear to the board that it's my opinion and that of my client, but it's my opinion independent of my client, that the size determination on signs, a condition of approval of signs such as this, I believe is a condition of approval, and it doesn't necessarily require an amendment for the board to decide what is an appropriate size sign and on which sides. I think that is within the board's discretion, because you have to decide what conditions allow you to determine that granting a variance for the request of increased size, what conditions would allow you to find, it's not contrary to the public interest, it's within keeping of the spirit of the ordinance, and it's a proposed reasonable use under a hardship that is found. So, we think, although I amended the application to 300 square feet, we think it's within your discretion to decide what you feel is appropriate, and on which signs you feel the square footage should be allocated. That having been said, and my requests to amend it down to 300 haven't been presented with what we think is potential size for us, my clients have asked me to state that it's really important that the board understand that the 150 north-facing is an absolute requirement for them. Without it, they just don't feel they can proceed, and if the board feels that that's not gonna be a reasonable use, or it's too big, we just want the board to understand that, that we've taken a good, hard look at it. As to the rest of the square footage, there's some flexibility in there, in that those signs, as the board has recognized, and everybody agrees, are less important for the traffic that's anticipated. My client's traffic really, as I stated before, and we went back and looked, all of their Convenient MDs, 50%, approximately 50% of the traffic coming to Convenient MDs comes a greater than 40-minute distance from Convenient MD. So, that's been consistently found throughout their locations, and as we stated, most of that traffic in this instance is gonna come from the interstate, likely, Route 89 and north. So, we're looking at the two signs that are most important for us, and as I say, a minimum of 150 on that north-facing sign is really critical. The west-facing sign, well, my letter says 75, my client has sort of upstaged me and asked me if I will indicate to you that they really need 100. That puts it at 150 plus 100 is 250, it doesn't leave much wiggle room if you're looking at between 250 and 300 total square foot for the south-facing sign, and they're willing to give up that sign, but they need that 150 north-facing, they would like 125 west-facing. That puts them at 275, and if you consent to a 25-square-foot sign for the south, so somebody could at least see it, that would be what my clients asked me to present to this board. 150, 125 west-facing, 25 south-facing. They recognize it's a difficult process for the board, but that's, that's really where they land. We think it's within the scope of what you all discussed last meeting, of total square footage, just sort of difference sizing on north, west, and south. Happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your giving us this extra crack at it, thank you.
Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Mr. Katz, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Patterson?
No questions.
Mr. Nash?
No questions.
I do have a question, Attorney Hollis.
Okay.
And Ms. Billings, I would, I would like this question and answer reflected in the record. As I understand your presentation, you are of the opinion, and you have so advised your clients, that it is within our discretion to make the size of the signs on the northwest and south faces, conditions of approval.
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Corwin, we're still, we are, have we, have we, or should we reopen the public hearing?
Well, I think we're in the public hearing, I haven't heard from anyone, any member of the public on this application, but you, if the board, if the chair would like to do so, might wanna consider asking if there are any members of the public here tonight to speak to the application.
Are there any members of the public here who wish to speak to this application? Hearing none. Do you have anything further, Attorney Hollis?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do any members of the board, in light of the question, just ask, have any questions for Attorney Hollis? Then we'll close the hearing and move to deliberation and decision. Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What do you think are appropriate sizes in light of everything we have read and heard and considered?
We've had these issues presented by them over the past year or so, and I think that the presentation this time was of great benefit to the board. I think that the flexibility demonstrated by the applicant, Attorney Hollis, showed that they were willing to do what it took to have them be able to establish themselves in the West Lebanon area, and I appreciate that. And I think, in terms of signage, about which I know almost nothing, but I understand the ordinance, I think that whether it's 150, 125, and 25, or 150, 75, and 75, they know more about it than I do, and I don't think that 150, 125, and 25 is offensive. We all drive down 12 and a regular basis, every time I go there, I think about Convenient MD, and I think that their application, and I think, I think there's, it's different than a taco stand, I think that they have to be easily identifiable, particularly now that we've heard that the majority of people drive at least 40 miles coming to an area that they may not be that familiar with for an urgent purpose. So, I appreciate their, the evidence and the testimony they provided, and I would vote in favor for either of those numbers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Katz?
Yeah, so, just one thing I wanted to note, as that I'm watching, there's a list of people in the meeting, and when you had asked for public comment, there was a hand that went up from someone named Janet, and I don't know if in fact there was a public comment that wanted to come out that, you know, wasn't there, but you might wanna consider calling for that unless it's, unless we're good to close.
Mr. Corwin?
You may wanna just reopen the hearing and allow the, thank you for noticing that, Mr. Katz. Chair may wanna reopen the hearing to allow that person to speak.
If there's somebody out there who wishes to be heard during the public hearing, we, a public hearing can be reopened. It's reopened.
So, Janet, do you wanna unmute yourself, you have to...
How do I do that?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I can talk.
Speak closer to the microphone, please.
Okay, can you, yes.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm here with Mike.
My name's Mike Balog.
Could you please pick your names and spelling for me?
Are you Mike? Or are you Janet?
Close the question.
You want to say your name?
You're talking. You're it.
Well, go ahead and proceed.
One more time, this is Linda Billings, the recording secretary. Could the two people from the public say their names and spell them for me?
Yeah, you're the public, all right. They're waiting for your input, Mike.
They're waiting for your input, your name.
Your case what they're thinking about, yes, no, they wanna know who you are.
We have Mike Balog's name, we don't have the name of, it sounds like a woman.
Okay, Janet, Janet Wong, J-A-N-E-T-W-O-N-G.
Okay. What, what do you folks have to offer us tonight regarding this application?
We're applying, we're applying for a variance in Article 3, Section 309.2, the zoning ordinance to modify and convert existing two-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. This is Janet Wong, your application is not being considered right now, you are fourth in line after this application is heard, so we'll come back to you, all right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, we just wanna know what the procedure is to play.
You will get an opportunity to make a presentation in a little bit. How much of a little bit, I can't tell you, because there's three more applications in front of you, but we'll get back.
Sorry, I didn't know, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, that's all right, don't worry about it. Where were we?
So, I was...
Mr. Katz, that's where we were.
So, yeah, I, look, I think I'll, in large part, echo Mr. McDonough's comments, I, you know, I understand the urgent cares request and their justification, and the potentially unique situation of the property. I, I think it's worth adding that I've had a couple of comments to city staff that I think that our ordinance, when we've seen several of these variances come across now, we might wanna consider how to preemptively address future requests of exhaustion of signage when new tenants come in in the ordinance rather than through the variance process. But, you know, I understand, you know, with the ordinance we have, why the applicant is here, and, you know, I could see myself being amenable to agreeing to that signed variance.
Mr. Patterson?
First, I wanna echo some of what Mr. McDonough said, but I wanna thank Attorney Hollis for his presentation, because I think it was... Hollis for his presentation because I think it was well said, well prepared, and put together in a way that, that made me understand the importance for the signage there. We typically have, I, I have been, you know, I have some concerns about larger signs and et cetera, so thank you him for that. The, the, the sizes that he presented, that they were, and I appreciate the fact that they were willing to compromise, and that they're willing to, to, like I said, the square footage, so, so I'm in favor of what he presented, and, and I thank him for that.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
I appreciate the explanation too, and I'm ready to move as soon as we agree on the, the numbers for the sides of the board.
Well, Mr. Nash, thank you, but we'll agree once we hear some numbers, or we won't agree. But if it's any help to you in drafting a motion, and I pick on you because you started the draft of motion at our last hearing, I would support 150 on the north side, 125 on the west side, and 25 on the south side. But if the rest of the board doesn't want to do that and wants other numbers, I'll go along with whatever the majority says. So, Mr. Nash, do you have a motion?
Sure. Ready for me to read it?
Sorry, Mr. Nash, this is Tim. Just to let you know, I, as, as we were moving along in this hearing, I, I made, I made a couple edits to the draft motion to reflect what Mr. Hollis had, had, you know, the applicant's revised proposal, and so I made a couple changes to finding a fact number four and the room numeral three decision. And I can put that on the screen, but I don't know if you can, can you see the screen, Dan?
Not yet. Mr. Corwin, if you're making changes to finding a fact number four, we can't see that.
So, Phil, you, you can't see the motion on, on the screen right now? Can you see any?
I, I can see the motion down to number two, but you got to scroll up. There you go.
So this was just a typo? But I, I removed the last sentence. It's not, it's not essential. We could certainly leave it in, but I, I added a sentence. I deleted the last sentence and added a sentence. At the, at the secondary hearing, the applicant again revised a proposal to request a wall sign of 150 square feet on the northerly side of the building, 125 square feet on the westerly side of the building, and 25 square feet on the southerly side of the building, for a total of 300 square feet of sign area.
Okay. I mean, okay, I understand.
Someone going to make the motion?
Okay, I'm ready. We're ready.
Yep.
All right. On August 3rd, 2020, August 17th, 2020, and September 8th, 2020, the duly noticed meetings of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment there, for Morgan Hollis Esquire on behalf of Convenient MD LLC applicant, and CT Brown and Family LLC regarding one interchange drive tax map, 114 lot 9, zoned GC. Applicant requests a variance from the section 608.4.8.1 of the zoning ordinance to install building signage totaling plus or minus 490 square feet of the total proposed sign area for the property exceed the maximum sign area allowed under section 608.4.8.1. Findings of fact, we have eight of them, four was just modified as per the screen. Conclusions of law, as a result of the above findings of fact and based on testimony given, application materials presented, and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the variance criteria set forth in section 801.2 of the zoning ordinance. One, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Three, substantial justice is done. Four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship owing to the, we leave that out, owing to the special conditions. Why, there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Double I, the proposed use is a reasonable one. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment on this 8th day of September 2020 hereby grants the request of Convenient MD to install the following signs at interchange drive tax map 114 lot 9. A wall sign of 150 square feet on the northerly side, a wall sign of 125 square feet on the westerly side, and a wall sign of 25 square feet on the southerly side. As set forth above and per testimony, plans and materials submitted and for the following condition. One, the applicant shall obtain a building permit, and two, this variance shall expire should the urgent care slash walk-in clinic use cease.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Discussion. Mr. McDonough?
Thank you. I thought at the end of his comments that Attorney Hollis was saying 150, 125, and 25 would be great, but what we would really prefer is 150, 75, and 75. And I know the proposal is for the first set of numbers, but to me, I would, I would be in favor of they can divide it up on either of those two numbers.
Attorney Hollis?
Yes.
What is your view on how the motion is worded?
Motion's correct. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. McDonough?
It does, thank you.
Mr. Katz?
So, I'm supportive of the size of the sign. I have a visceral problem to the second condition that's put on. I know that there was early discussion that talked about essentially that it's really important for urgent care to have signage, and I really just don't feel that we should be in the business of determining what business is more deserving of signage or less. I think business is business. I don't like that restriction, and I just don't think it's fair, and I think it opens up a horrible can of worms, and I would be just as willing to approve it without that limitation and let that signage run with the property.
Mr. Corwin, what was the second condition? Can you put that up on the screen, please?
I did that one verbally.
On what I think I heard.
Mr. Corwin?
It leaves with the establishment of...
Wait a minute. Mr. Corwin, was there a second condition?
There was a second condition read by Mr. Nash. I assume that he was reading from something, but if he said it out loud, then we're going to have to take the time to write it down. If he's saying it off the top of the head, we're going to have to take the time to write it down.
Mr. Nash, could you read your second condition again, please?
Certainly. This variance shall expire should the urgent care slash walk-in clinic use cease.
Okay. And, Mr. Katz, you think we're opening a can of worms here, right?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Patterson, what do you think?
I, I respectfully disagree with that. I believe that when you're talking about life safety, I think that difference from a, you know, lawnmower repair shop. I, I don't think that they would fall into the same quarter category. I think that in these circumstances, based on our sign ordinance and what we're trying to do, we have, as a board, compromised, but for, one of my reasons is because it is for public safety. So, I, I don't necessarily agree with that take on it. I, I think it can be easily explained and weighed against another business going in, such as a coffee shop or something.
All right. Mr. Nash?
I think it's appropriate. We talked about this in the beginning. The whole argument for the residential area is primarily centered on the urgent care walk-in use. And if that ceases to exist and it goes back to being a furniture store or a dollar store, the criteria for the enlarged sign are no longer met, so it should, the approval should expire. So I think it's reasonable to leave it in.
Okay. My view is that, I think the importance of how big this sign, signage had to be was way overblown. And if I had my druthers, the sign would be much smaller, but my, my sense of where the board was going was, was they were going to approve a significant amount of signage. I, if Convenient moves out, then I would want to reconsider the amount of signage that was there, and I would not want a grandfather in 300 square feet of signage when the signage on the building already exceeds what's allowed. So, although I'm appreciative of Mr. Katz's argument that it opens a can of worms, I'm, I'm happy to go fishing with those worms if we ever have to open up that can. So...
Would I, could I respond and propose a potential alternative solution?
Sure. Absolutely.
So, and, and maybe Mr. Corwin could provide the proper reference, but my understanding is with signs, that once a sign is taken down, it's down and that square footage is essentially, you know, lost, and it reverts back to what's allowed under the ordinance anyway. So, you know, my, my issue is not necessarily with it expiring if it gets taken down, my issue is tying it to something that allows someone to come in or encourages people to come in for variances in the future, saying, "I'm more important than the next person because my business is more important." And that's fundamentally wrong. However, we might be able to just simply craft a condition that says, "If these signs are taken down, the variance will expire," without discussing the use and its theoretical importance that we can disagree on, and probably accomplish the same goal.
Mr. Corwin, your comments?
I, I think that's a great idea. I like that.
Mr. Nash, would you... What, Mr. Katz, do you want to propose an amendment to the motion?
So, well, I, it's not up in front of us, but I, if we had it typed and I could see it, I can probably propose an alternative wording that I'd be happy with. Is there any way to put it on the screen?
I can put, I still don't have Mr. Nash's condition written, but I can get, I can put...
Or, or, or Condition 2 could simply say, you know, this, this variance will expire if the approved, you know, if the, if, if the signs permitted by this variance are ever removed.
Mr. Chair, can I add something?
You can ask something, sure.
All right. I, I don't think it's that simple because the face of a sign can be changed without removing the sign, therefore leaving the same square footage in the sign but reading something different. I think the motion as stated is sufficient in this location because we've already added more signage than we really normally probably would have, and I don't, I don't think that it's opening up a can of worms. I strongly disagree with that. I think that what it's doing is we're defining, and when you're talking public safety, and if you're talking about the, you know, a, a business that doesn't provide any type of a healthcare, that's a completely different category than talking about a coffee shop or a tool shop. So, I'm not picking businesses, but I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. So I, I think that even changing the motion to that doesn't, doesn't change anything because I'll just change the face of the sign and not the sign.
I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson, that I called upon you before asking for a second to the motion to amend. So let me ask now, is there a second to the motion to amend? I'll, I'll second the motion. The motion. I'll second the motion. So...
But I, since I seconded this, this thing in the beginning, you don't have to, I mean...
Well, we're going to take, we're going to take a vote on the motion to amend before we take a vote on the motion as drafted.
And, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this is Tim. The, the amendment that's on the table is Mr. Nash's. No, it's Mr., it's Mr., where are we?
Mr. Katz's.
Okay. Can I, can I offer a, a, an amendment to Mr. Katz's off-the-cuff suggestion, which is...
Well, why don't, why don't you suggest to Mr. Katz what you think is right, and then Mr. Katz, if he feels so inclined, can...
Okay. Right. This is a slight, a slight change with, with one key word added to address Mr. Patterson's comment. So my suggestion would be this approval shall expire if the signs authorized by this variance are ever removed or refaced.
And I, I would be fine with that, and, and I'll just, just put it out there, and because I know that reasonable people could disagree, and I understand Mr. Patterson's point, and I respect him very much. I, I just want to say that, you know, I, I put out there, I'd be glad to give the applicant the relief they requested, but I'm not going to sign my name on something that basically says we may be deciding who's more meritorious of things than others. And it, it, that is, that's what really bothers me here. Mr. Corwin's suggestion is something I would definitely be on board with.
I, I second Mr. Katz's amendment. Is there any more discussion on that? So...
Not without...
Mr. Corwin, could you read the amendment?
The, the amendment would replace Mr. Nash's proposed condition number two with, with this, with, with the following. This approval shall expire if the signs authorized by this variance are ever removed or refaced.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
I guess I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
I'll vote in favor.
And I vote in favor. Now, on, on the, on the original motion put forth by Mr. Nash as amended by Mr. Katz, Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Patterson?
In favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. Mr. Hollis, your petition is granted, or Attorney Hollis, your petition is granted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration. Have a nice evening.
The next item on our agenda is a new public hearing in the manner... The next item on our agenda is a new public hearing in the manner, in the matter of Ann Eleanor White, 57 Meskoma Street, Tax Map 91 Lot 108, Zone R3. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 703.1 of the zoning ordinance to reconstruct and expand an existing detached garage that is non-conforming to the 15-foot minimum sideyard requirement from the line shared with 7 Cameron Avenue. Is the applicant present by phone?
Yes. Yes, sir. No, I'm present by computer.
That, that's fine. You're present. And that's good. Um, is there anybody with you who will be testifying this evening?
Um, the builder is online, is here as well in case there are questions I can't answer.
All right. And the builder's name is?
Dana Stockman.
Would you spell that for the stenographer, please?
D A N A S T O C K M A N.
Would you tell us a little bit about your project, please?
So my garage, the present garage is, um, the foundation is shot and it's falling down. Um, it is also too small to fit a vehicle into it. So I'm hoping that I can make a bigger garage that will fit my vehicle as well as things like lawn mowers and, um, snow blowers and tools and snow tires and things like that. Um, and be able to fit my vehicle in it as well.
Okay. And your proposal is what?
Uh, my proposal is, um, to expand it. I guess the, the big, the big issue is the length that is shared with Cameron, 7 Cameron Avenue. It is going to be six, uh, no, eight feet longer. Um, the goal is to, to push it back a little bit on the property. When the town redid the water and the road, I lost some of my driveway. And so my hope is to push it back a little bit on the property and to make it larger so that I will have like a parking area if someone comes to visit my house.
And let me ask you this. Your, your garage currently is four feet from the property line, right?
Yes, as best we can tell.
And after it's reconstructed, how far will it be from the property line?
The same. It's not, it's not going to move closer. It's just going to go back on the property.
All right. Um, is there anything else that you would like us to consider?
Not that I can think of, sir.
Um, questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. McDonough?
Yeah, I'm here, sir.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
None, none, none by Mr. McDonough. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Katz?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
No questions.
Mr. Nash?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Uh, Ms. White?
Yes.
We will deliberate and decide your case, uh, on September 21st.
Yes.
By giving, uh, anybody who's not able to get through tonight an opportunity to submit something to the zoning board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think we have, uh, interested parties on the-
Oh, uh, are there interested parties in this matter or butters who wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is Casey Aldrich. C A S E Y A L D R I C H.
And-
I'm here.
Ms. Aldrich, where do you live?
I, I'm here with my husband, Brian Aldrich, and we are the neighbors at 7 Cameron Avenue, abutting, uh, Ms. White's property.
Okay.
Um, we don't have any objection to the garage project and see the, the need for this to be done. However, we do have some concerns.
Okay.
Around where the property line actually lies. Um, when the CSO project was done over the past couple of years, the pin marking the front, um, in the front of our property was removed. And so there's actually, um, you know, an idea of where this might be. But, um, the project that Ms. White is hoping to do will require cutting down, uh, some trees and some greenery that kind of line our properties. And we, um, we want to make sure that if that's something that needs to happen, that we are certain that those aren't on our property. Um, in particular, there's one large oak tree that, um, that we'd really hate to see go. And so we feel that it would be important to, um, you know, clearly establish where the line actually lies.
That sounds like a reasonable concern. Um, comments from the board regarding Ms. Aldrich's concerns?
Mr. Chair?
This is Dan Nash.
Uh, well, hang on a second. Al was first. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I would, if, if, if that's not delineated clearly, I would, I would say that's absolutely a reasonable questioning and one that should definitely be addressed prior to, um, any construction or cutting of greenery or anything. So I, I, I think that's extremely reasonable. And I would think the applicant would be, would also want to know that just for peace of mind as well.
Mr. Nash?
Uh, if the city removed the property pin during construction, you should be able to call them and have that property pin restored. And also the reference line for this project is the edge of the existing building. So as long as they're not going closer to the property line, they're only going further back, we should be able to easily determine, uh, if or what trees need to be removed.
So what, what, what are, I, I, I guess I'm not clear on what you're suggesting.
As long as the applicant doesn't go any closer to the property line than the existing building, uh, I think the property line issue is a matter between the two property owners.
Well, yeah, but according to Ms. Aldrich, in order to build the proposed new garage, uh, a large oak tree may have to come down and that, where that is apparently cannot be readily determined.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the root systems for the rest of the trees lining the property. Um, because there's really not a lot of distance between the current structure and, and any of the trees that are there now. Um, and so I did, I did make some phone calls because I do believe that the pin was removed when the construction was happening. So I was trying to find whether there might be a site survey on file. And I've spoken to, to a few people, um, and have been unable to locate a site survey. I did speak with Mr. Corwin this afternoon, who was going to look into it for me, um, and, and see what he might be able to find.
Okay. Um, at this point, um, this hearing is scheduled for decision deliberation for September 21st. And it strikes me, and I'm, I'm going to solicit input from the rest of the board. Thank you. It's very helpful. I'm going to solicit input from the rest of the board, but, um, I, it, it seems to me that the board has no problem with granting the special exception, but before work begins or trees get cut down, um, there ought to be a determination of the boundary line. There's no need for a motion, but the general sense of the board, Mr. Mr. McDonough, how do you feel?
I think that, uh, I agree with you. I think if we're not going to vote on it, I think that that certainly should be ascertained and determined before any construction begins.
Uh, Mr. Katz?
Uh, yeah, I'm in alignment with that as well. I also wonder if there's anyone else in the public that wants to, uh, to comment on this too, but I'm fine with that.
We'll get to that. Um, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I, I think that's a good idea. I think we definitely should, for both parties' sake, determine where that boundary line is prior to, uh, any construction.
Mr. Nash?
Um, I agree. That would be a good condition, that the boundary line be ascertained prior to issuance of a building permit and that no tree cutting be done over the property line.
Um, Mr. Corwin, is there anybody else in the public who is wanting to be heard on this matter?
Um, it's, it's not always possible for me to tell. I, I don't, I don't, I, I can't, I can't tell with certainty. We should probably just get, give a, give a moment for anyone else to, uh, hop on.
If, if anybody signals to you, let me know.
Okay.
Um, Ms. White?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I would say that the sense of the board is that they are going to, at least at, based on what we've heard thus far, are implying to look favorably upon your request for a special exception. Um, but they're not going to, I, I, I think they want, uh, the boundary line to be determined before any trees get cut down. And my, my, my sense is that any approval for a special exception would include a, a condition about that. And so, um, the sooner you act on determining the boundary line, um, the sooner it seems that you would probably be able to build your new garage. But in the meantime, um, we're going to hold the public hearing open. And is there a motion to continue this to September 21st?
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson.
Mr. Patterson?
I made a motion to continue this to 9/21 of 20.
Dan Nash, second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Mr. McDonough?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Uh, Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. Uh, the vote is unanimous. Uh, we will talk to you in two weeks, Ms. White.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and Ms. Aldrich?
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Visions for Creative Housing Solutions, 12 Green Street, Tax Map 92 Lot 131, Zone R2. Request for a special exception pursuant to Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance to permit a group residence. Is there anybody here on behalf of the applicant?
I am Sylvia Dow, Executive Director of Visions for Creative Housing.
Would you please spell your name?
S Y L V I A D O W.
And can you tell us something about your application, please?
Yes, we came before you two years ago. Um, we were granted the special exception of the group living. This is on 12 Green Street and we have finally purchased the building. The reason that, that our request has lapsed is that we've had difficulty, um, assisting the current tenants to find housing because of COVID. So our application, um, that was approved has lapsed. So we're back again. We're hoping to start construction soon. Um, our building permits are all filed with you. The only thing we're lacking is, um, once again, coming before you for spec- special exception. So.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question before we get going?
Sure.
Um, just in light of, uh, the applicant's, uh, opening, if, there's nothing, there's no, uh, provision for extenuating circumstances and getting a continuation. If you fall outside of the date, you have to go through the whole process again?
Yes.
Regardless of COVID, regardless of?
Yes. Yeah, I, and Mr. Corwin?
We, we, we certainly looked into that, Mr. Patterson, but there, there, we just, we, we don't have any authority to waive a, a, a very clear regulation, unfortunately. Um, the, uh, Section 801.3 of the zoning ordinance, uh, provides that a special exception shall expire if the use is not in place within two years of the date of issuance, um, or approval by the zoning board. Uh, and then it goes on to say that in such cases, a new application for a special exception must be completed.
Huh. I guess that, I mean, obviously this COVID is new and all, and, and we're walking a new path, but, um, I would certainly think that in light of what was explained that I'm not sure we're going to hear anything new. I think we're gonna, um, I mean, I was on this before, so that was the reason for my question. That's all.
Okay. Perfectly good question. Um, Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, just quickly, this is the same application that was granted before that expired. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No further questions. Thank you.
I di- I didn't catch that last comment, Mr. McDonough.
Um, I have, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Katz?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Patterson?
I have no questions.
Mr. Nash?
No further questions.
And I have no questions, Ms. Dow. Um, is there a motion, as we informed everybody at the beginning of this meeting, we give two weeks or to our next meeting for individuals to contact the zoning board in order to make any comments in the event they were not able to get through. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, did you want to allow public comment tonight?
Sure, if there's public people or people from the public.
I, i- if there's anyone who would like to, this is Tim, if there's anyone who would like to participate in the hearing, um, again, uh, feel free to move your cursor to the bottom, uh, middle portion of your screen and click on the microphone to unmute yourself. And if you're on the phone, uh, please, please, uh, press star six to unmute yourself. And just feel free to, to speak up and announce who you are and spell your name for the record.
I think we do have some people on. Elizabeth Larson should be on.
Ms. Larson?
Yes, I-
Are you there? How are you tonight?
I'm very well.
Long time no see.
Yes.
What, what can you, uh, what would you like to tell us about this application?
Well, uh, this, again, as Sylvia said, is the same application that went before you a couple of years ago. We had a lot of community support. We had support from the neighbors for our project. Um, I believe everybody is excited to, uh, see this going through to provide supportive housing for 10 residents in downtown Lebanon. That's it. Oh, thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public?
Yes. Um, my name's Lisa Green. I'm a resident of Lebanon and I fully support this project.
Um, Ms. Green, do you live anywhere near the project?
Um, no, I live in downtown, but not, not necessarily near there.
Just curious. Uh, anything further?
No, just supporting.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
I'm not sure how to make myself known. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but you should tell us your name and how you spell.
I will. My name is Liz Nickerson. That's N I C K E R S O N. I am a consultant working with Visions for Creative Housing Solutions. I live in Woodstock, Vermont. And I think it might be interesting to the board to know that we've worked hard to source all of the funding for the project, including through Masoma Bank, a $650,000 grant from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston, in addition to a $930,000 fixed-rate subsidized advance with Masoma. And the financing is in place, and because of the unfortunate events of 2020, the construction start was delayed, but we're ready to go.
Good. Is that it, Ms. Nickerson?
We think this is not a matter of, aside from, you know, obviously ZVA approval, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public?
Is it me in? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L, last name Jones.
You're getting a whole lot of feedback.
My name is Cheryl Jones.
J-O-N-E-S?
Correct.
Well, can you tell us, Ms. Jones?
And my son Dennis Jones is with me.
Okay.
And we are community members and are very supportive of this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? Ms. Dow, are you aware of anybody else who will be wanting to testify?
I don't think so. I think, I think we're excited to move ahead and become very good neighbors to everyone on Green Street.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Dow in light of what we've just heard? All right, is there a motion to continue this hearing to September 21st?
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson. I'll make a motion to continue standing to 9/21 of 20.
Is there a second?
Dan Nash, I'll second you.
Any? Any discussion? Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
I voted in favor.
And I vote in favor. The vote is unanimous. Ms. Dow, we will talk to you on September 21st. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Our next case is David Wong, property owner, Janet Wong, applicant, 23 Eldridge Street, tax map 77, lot 190, Zoned R3. Request for a variance from Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance to convert an existing two-family dwelling to a four-unit multifamily dwelling, which is not a permitted use in the R3 district, and from Section 310.3 to allow density to exceed the maximum permitted in the R3 district. Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Jeremy Katz. I just wanted to let you know I have to recuse myself from this hearing, and that will drop us below five. You might want to give the option to defer the hearing to the applicant, but I'm going to have to sit this one out.
Okay, I caught the part where you have to recuse yourself, but I lost what you said after that.
Oh, sorry. I have to recuse myself. It'll bring you down to four members to hear this.
All right. Is there anybody here from the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, to be heard?
Yes.
Well, who is it?
Hello, yes.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
It sounds like you're too far away from your microphone.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Who is, is this Janet Wong?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wong, one of our members has recused himself from this hearing. And what that means to you is, you need three votes in order to obtain the relief you are seeking. But there are only four members. We will have, you have the opportunity of going forward with four members or deferring this hearing until we have five members.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is Tim, just.
Mr. Corwin, hang on a second. I should point out to you, we're not going to be taking any votes tonight. So that any vote on your application is going to be held at the earliest in two weeks. So how do you wish to proceed?
No, but Mr. Chair, the board's rules of procedure provide that, this is 8E2 of the zoning board's bylaws.
I forgot about that.
Yep, this is, so it provides that an application that has been submitted to the board to appeal an administrative decision and/or to resolve an existing violation of the zoning ordinance shall be heard or reheard so long as a quorum is present. And that was, that was an amendment, and I know there was some, I think Mr. Katz had some question that amendment, but that amendment was adopted and is part of the bylaws.
Okay.
But as you point out, it's arguably moot since no decision will be made tonight in any case.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with the hearing. And I believe there was somebody with you earlier. Is he going to be testifying?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is that Mr. Baylog?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. All right, why don't you tell us about your project? Now, we can't hear you. You're either not speaking into the microphone, or it's faulty, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Not very well.
Apologize, it's a technical issue. The applicant is, Ms. Wong, she wants to see like a variance, Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance, to modify and convert existing two-family dwellings into a four-family unit multifamily dwelling. And we have, the paperwork was submitted before your board. You could say that we were asking of variance to be determined from the family dwellings.
You're, you're, you were clear for a moment there, but it's like you leaned away from your microphone or turned it off or something. We cannot hear you.
I can hear the papers.
Can you hear?
Talk louder. Okay, I'm trying to talk louder. According to research I've done on modification or conversion of buildings for one or two-family dwellings to multifamily dwelling, committed in R3 district residential zone, provided that the modification or conversion complies with the requirements set forth in Section 601, which is the conversion of older residences in older buildings. Unfortunately, it's difficult to comply with this.
No, we're losing you again. We've lost you.
I'm trying to get the volume on this more. Problem is, it requires compliance with applicable density required in Section 309.3.
Mr. Baylog? Mr. Baylog?
I can't hear you.
We cannot hear you. You need to speak more slowly, and you need to speak louder, and you need to speak into the microphone.
Trying to speak loudly, sir. Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay, how about now, better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The research to determine.
There's definitely a technical difficulty or something.
We have a small lot, it's only 0.2.
Mr. Baylog, there's definitely something wrong with the connection that you have to us. Because you are fading in and out, and it will be impossible for us to give you the hearing you deserve if you do not have a better connection to us.
It's not, I don't know what it is. It's got to be the net or something.
Can you call in on the phone?
Yeah.
Yes.
How do we do that?
I will, this is Tim. I will give you a, I will give you the phone number. Just hold on a second, unless someone else has it at the tip of their fingers. Janet, or is it Mike? The phone number to call in is 9, area code 929 229
929?
229.
229?
Five?
No, it's 929. 929?
Yep, 229.
229?
53 56.
56. Okay, hit it.
When you hear the prompt for the conference ID, let me know, and I'll read it out loud to you. Okay, it's, it's 955
955?
204 457 pound.
7 pound.
Yep.
Sorry, I can't find a meeting with that number. Try entering your conference ID again, and then press pound.
Okay. Okay, here we go. It's nine digits long, followed by a pound sign. 955.
955 204 457.
Right, pound.
You are now joining a meeting. You have been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Star six. Star six.
You are no longer muted.
Okay, can you hear us now, sir?
Yeah, hang up from the Teams meeting. So just be on the phone.
Okay, can you hear us now, sir? Hello, can you hear us now, sir?
There's something, we're getting some serious feedback.
Yeah, it's my hearing device. Can you hear me now? I'm not supposed to shut off. You'll push your volume back.
All right, Janet, Janet and Mike, this is Tim. Please, please just get off the meeting, and then try calling back. In the meantime. Okay. If you're I don't know if they're still on. If they're still on, try calling back. Maybe the board can move to the rehearing request item for the moment. I don't know, however you'd like to proceed, Mr. Chair.
For the moment, we'll move to the request for rehearing. Adam and Sheena Youngman, 8 Ora Avenue, tax map 90, lot 4, Zoned R3. Motion to rehear request for a variance from Article 3, Section 310.3 of the zoning ordinance to construct a 12-by-20 shed to be located approximately eight feet from the side lot line, where a minimum side yard of 15 feet is required, denied by the zoning board on July 20th, 2020. Thoughts on the request for rehearing? Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's new evidence or a mistake in law, or something needs to be corrected, I guess those are the justifications. I'm not sure that they exist in this particular matter. There was discussion about another equitable remedy for them. I think that's more attractive, but at this point, I'm not sure that this needs to be overturned.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Mr. Katz?
Yeah, I would, I would put forward a motion to deny if it was timely. Everything that is discussed in the two bullet points on the letter were facts that could have been brought during the initial hearings and were in their possession, and they simply chose not to bring them. So I see no reason that we should grant a rehearing.
Mr. Patterson?
I'm going to I agree with that. I don't think that we should have a rehearing. I don't.
Mr. Patterson, I didn't catch any of that. It was sort of all muffled.
Yeah, okay, I, obviously, we're having some technical difficulties tonight because everybody's broke up. I don't think that we have the grounds for the rehearing. I think that there's stuff in there that could have been presented earlier.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nash?
Looking at the two bullet points, I recall hearing those items being discussed, and when I visited the site, I could see that information. So there's nothing really new that they brought forward that we were not aware of or ignored. So I can't support a request for rehearing.
All right, I agree with the rest of you. Is there a motion?
I move to deny. Jeremy Katz.
Is there a second?
Dan Nash, second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
Vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The vote is unanimous. Mr. Corwin, do you have any staff comments? Mr. Corwin?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not have any staff comments. Do you want to try and return to Agenda Item 5D?
Do you have them on the line?
I don't, there's one, I think Linda Billings has, the minutaker, has joined us by phone. If that's the case, there's one phone number that I don't recognize.
That's me, Adam Youngman.
Oh, Adam. Well, no, no, it's not you. I see you. There's someone else, and then. There's someone else. And then Janet is still on the line. Yep.
This is Linda. Yes, I got booted out of the Teams, and I've called in. Now I'm back in Teams, and I'm hanging up.
Okay, so there's one, yep, there's one phone number
Who were you asking, did we get?
That I don't recognize. There's Lawrence, who's on the, on the law, or on the meeting. There's an unknown user, and Janet is still on as well.
Well, what we want to do is hear from Ms. Wong or Mr. Baylog.
You, you, you got phones.
Your phone? Okay, what's the phone number again? Right down to the...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Patterson?
I don't know if it would help to point out that we can hear Mrs. Wong, Janet Wong, but I mean, I guess she's not presenting, but for some reason, she comes across, so we can hear her, but the gentleman does not.
Hello? Yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We tried to mention before that we're trying to apply to zoning variance, the request for zoning variance, that there is a problem complying to Section 601.4 due to the number of acres the dwelling sits on, .01 acres, whereas the requirement being at least 0.37 acres in order to meet the standard set forth in Section 601.4. So the proposed variance request to convert a garage to modify original two-family dwelling into a four-unit multifamily dwelling to support small apartments to be in accordance with Section 309.2, references R3 residential district table for permitted use, sir.
I caught about half of that. What about the rest of you?
We have submitted the information.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Could you follow that?
No, and I actually want to point out that I've missed probably 60% of what's been said on this hearing. I don't even, I can't say that I've heard the testimony enough to even make a fair or an educated decision on this hearing.
Mr. McDonough?
I think we're all under the same burden here. I think, and with a late hour, I think that it needs to be continued.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
But, Mr. Chair, just, this is Tim. I did hear a good chunk of what the applicant was saying, and I would like to just clarify the record at the outset because I don't, I'd hate for there to be any additional confusion. What the applicant is saying or is suggesting is that they would, they would qualify for a multifamily conversion under Section 601 of the zoning ordinance, but for the size of the property. But I want to, I just want to make it very clear, as it's pointed out in the memo, that Section 601 has absolutely no bearing or relevance on this application whatsoever. Multifamily conversion per 601 is not a permitted use in the R3 district. So I appreciate you letting me clarify that at the outset. And the only other thought is there may be one or two of these folks who have waited, you know, three and a half hours now, or sorry, yeah, almost three hours. There may be some people online who'd like to give some public comment on this, on this application. I just wonder if you'd please ask.
I, I... My own inclination is not to take any public comment until we hear from the applicant. Because we...
I'm very concerned that we're going to have this same problem next time. And I just want to, I just want to put that on the record. This is a code enforcement matter. It's been going on a very long time. This is, it's, I just want to be sure that this is going to be fixed for the next hearing. And I think that that burden is on the applicant to make sure that they, that they, we can hear them.
So is there, is there a pending code enforcement action?
Yes, this is, this is a very serious code enforcement matter.
All right, so...
I'm just, I'm just want the applicant to know that they must find a way to make themselves be heard at the next meeting because there is an underlying code enforcement action that may go forward.
Okay.
We can't allow this to delay.
We, no. We...
We'll get new equipment. We'll get new equipment, get back.
Yeah.
Mr. Corwin, can you hear me? Everybody except the board?
Hello? Can you hear us? Hello?
Mr. Corwin?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can you mute everybody but the board?
Uh, yes.
All right. Mr. McDonough thinks this motion should be continued. Mr. Patterson has not been able to follow what's going on. I have not been able to follow. Mr. McDonough, do you want to make a motion?
I do. I think we should continue this matter for two weeks. Thank you.
To the 21st?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, is there discussion?
My own, reference to discussion, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah.
In light of the fact that I've heard next to nothing of to what their, the applicant's reasonings are or what's going on, I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't do this any justice. So I think we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Mr. Katz, do you have any comments?
I'm still recused, so I can't come up to this. Thanks for asking.
Sorry, you're right. Mr. Nash?
I don't have any comments. I think it's pretty clear this is not allowed, and I'm not sure that... Well, I tried to hear next time the applicant's justification for a variance, but I'm not optimistic. So I think we ought to continue.
All right, I agree.
Can I ask one last question, though, for staff?
Yes, sir.
If there's a significant violation, code violation that the cities feel, the city feels is taking place, why would the city need to wait for this to resolve before taking action? Could they rescind the decision they made if they did so? Or is this like a buffer or a protection zone for someone if they're in some sort of a code violation and then file a variance or some sort of a zoning board relief, if you will?
Well, we've been, we've been trying to get the applicant to, there are several different properties involved for the applicant. And with respect to this one, we've been working, been trying to get the applicant to file an application for several years now. And we're finally here, but there is a, there's a pending court action related to this property and several others owned by the applicant that, that I'm not, I'm not specifically involved with that, but I know that we need to expeditiously, as expeditiously as possible, you know, come to a conclusion on this variance request so that we have that piece of the puzzle in place. You know, as we do with all code enforcement efforts, the effort, the goal is compliance. And so the proper, the best way to do that is to go through our normal procedures, which in this case would be to go to the zoning board to ask for a variance. But we need that to happen, and I'm just concerned that there is this technical issue that has not happened with any other applicant that I can recall. And I'm just, I just don't want it to delay the over, the underlying code enforcement action, which involves several different properties. So I just want the my point was just to make the applicant aware, and I'm sure they will, that they have to, that they, the onus is on them to make sure that they are able to participate in the hearing next time, to fix this problem for next time. I just, I just wanted to make the importance of that clear to the applicant.
Can that, would it be out of line to stress that in writing to them prior to the 21st till we hear?
Yes, I will, I will, I will do that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Corwin. All right. Mr. McDonough, how do you vote on a motion to continue?
I vote in favor.
All right. Mr. Katz? Oh, I'm quoting, sorry. Mr. Patterson?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I'll make it unanimous. Mr. Corwin, I believe I asked you earlier if there were any staff comments, and you said no.
I do not have any. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for a good evening.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn. Al Patterson.
Is this... Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson?
In favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
And I'll make it unanimous. Stay safe, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.